Good evening, everyone. This is the Webster Planning Board meeting of April 28th. Welcome to all. We're going to call to order and make an announcement. The first, anything else we've got to do before we get into the action? Well, we have a new member here that I'd like to introduce. Brian Shaw, he's an associate member. And welcome, Brian. You know, hopefully he'll stay on as long as I did. I just found out today, I've been on the planning board since August of 2004. So, yeah, so it was time for me to move on, I believe. So, the first thing, the action item is reorganization. We're going to put this off until the end. And we'll discuss that later on. Next item that we have on here is draft meeting minutes from March 24th.
They were distributed, there were no edits from our two vigilant readers, Kathy and Chuck, so...
I'll make a motion to, I'll look for a motion to approve those minute meetings of March 24th.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, approval not required under subdivision law, A and R Plan 17 and 19 Level 1 Road, Assessor ID 46-8-53-0, Joseph and Jean Seraphin, the owners.
Yes, this plan was submitted and reviewed with the applicant. I have a standard checklist based on the regulations, and this meets all the regulations. The applicant is here, if you have additional questions.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
There's two homes on the property right now?
No, actually, this is, this is two separate lots. You see, this, this is the line that is being moved to here. So, it is two separate lots, they're just moving a lot more.
It doesn't create any non-conformities?
No, it does not.
So, looking for a motion, Ian, for approving the A and R plan?
And to endorse and to direct staff to sign if you so choose.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R plan for 17 and 19 Level 1 Road, and to direct staff to sign the decision on our behalf.
Okay.
I'll second.
Kathy seconds it, anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is D, request for determination of completeness and acceptance of Asbeld Plan, Baton Street Solar, 7 Walden Drive, previously known as Zero School Street, Assessor ID 10-8-29-0, Nexium Free Holding Incorporated, applicant owner continued from 32425.
The, this has been an ongoing item here because the lawyers have been hashing out the access to the swale, so that the town can get in there and do maintenance. Apparently, they've come to an agreement, and now nobody seems to know who should sign that document first. So, I'll take direction from the board as to what you want me to do. You have two choices, to continue it, or to just direct staff to take it off the agenda, and that might light a little fire under them, because they're still waiting on their final certificate of occupancy. So, it's entirely up to you how you want to proceed. You can continue to another date, or take it off and have them formally request again.
I think we've seen it on here for a while.
Yeah.
Take it off.
We would take it off?
Take it off? Okay.
Everybody in favor of that?
Yep.
Any motion, Ian?
Nope.
Okay, E, determination of minor modification and vote, 300 R Road, Thompson Road, modification of site plan approval, approved by board on January 27, 2025, modify condition 11F to replace 298 with 302.
Yes, actually, these next two items are specific to what occurred after your meeting. You have the discretion to determine if something's a minor modification. So, this first one is saying, do you want to determine that changing that number from 298 to 302 is a minor modification in the planning board decision, which is 11F? If you decide it's not a minor modification, then staff would be then directed by the board to reopen an entire new public meeting for all advertising to be completed. So, that's the first item there, to modify the language in the approval. And then the second one, the site plan, I'm just going to bring it up here. The, I called the property owner, the applicant. The site plan endorsement set has now been modified to show that the fence now runs the entire property line. And I'm just going to pull that up. Those were the two, two issues that were brought before you at the last meeting by a resident. And this would now resolve those two issues that were presented to you. And I'm just going to see if I can find what sheet it's on. But I want you to see that the detail has been changed, so now it runs the entire property line.
So, what is the 298 reference, is that?
298 references the property on the other side of the entrance, which...
Oh, that's the address?
Yes, but the, the ZIS property, which is specific to the condition 11F, about the fence running, said 298, and it should have read 302.
Okay.
It was a Scrivener's error, if I remember right.
Yes, so that's why it's up to you to determine whether or not that Scrivener's error requires another full-blown public advertised meeting. And so now you will see, the fence now runs the entire length of the property and around that jog as well. So, that's what, that's what was the concern of the board, to get it right the last time. So, this first item that is on the agenda is to make a determination as to whether or not that language change is minor.
So, that way, that was just a Scrivener's error?
That was just a Scrivener's error.
Yeah, I support the 14-page decision, I think.
I made one mistake.
Minor modification.
And I think on the fence, you know, we've been talking a lot about fences in different parts of the properties, and I think this goes back at least a year.
Yeah.
So, I would also...
Yeah, so we can handle one at, one at a time. I think the first one, Ian, I think we need a vote on it.
You would need, you would need two votes on that. The first is to vote that it is a minor modification, and the second vote would be to approve the minor modification.
Does someone want to make a...
I'll make a motion to modify 11, modifying 11F to replace 298 with 302 is a minor modification.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a second motion to approve the minor modification of replacing 28 with 302 and 11F.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, the, is the site plan endorsement set for, to authorize staff to sign on behalf of the board. It has met all the other requirements of the conditions of approval with regards to submission of an endorsement set.
Someone want to make a motion to approve the site plan endorsement set?
I'll make that motion.
Do we need a motion for the, for, is it?
The signing?
This fence, is what, wasn't that supposed to be minor modification?
Well, this is the modification that, I had them put it on the plan set, so you wouldn't have to jump through that second hoop.
Okay.
I'll say this, gee, yeah, I made a motion.
Someone want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll sit in. Okay, G, review and vote on site plan endorsement set, parking lot and site improvements, 51 Ray Street, Samuel Slater Experience, Webster Museums Incorporated, applicant town of Webster, owner.
Yes, in accordance with your, your approval, your site plan approval, the applicant was required to submit an endorsement set, and they have complied with all the conditions for what needs to be on that endorsement set.
Anybody have any questions on this? Someone want to make a motion to vote on the site plan endorsement set for 51 Ray Street?
Make a motion to approve the site plan endorsement set for 51 Ray Street.
And direct staff to sign.
And direct staff to sign the decision on our behalf.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
H, draft decision modification of a site plan to include outdoor seating and EV charging stations, 137 East Main Street, Assessor ID 24-F-11-12-0, PMG Northeast LLC is the owner, Norreya Energy Corporation is the applicant.
You have a draft decision in front of you, and it's also on, on the screen. These are the people who are eligible to vote, based on the times that testimony was taken. So, the four of you who are here are eligible to vote. If you need me to scroll up the screen, otherwise, I'm just going to explain to you what's in the decision. You've got the, you know, the background is telling the story of when the meetings were and when things were posted. The exhibit list covers all the information that was received during the course of the public meeting, because you're only modifying the site plan. The special permit issued for that site was specific to signage, and this did not involve signage. The findings of fact outline the issues that were discussed at the public hearing and documentation that was received. The original approval was June 27, 2022. The modifications are specific to the materials for enclosing the dumpster, the addition of an outdoor seating area, and the relocation of the electric vehicle charging stations. F4, 5, and 6 talk about each one of those individually. The EV parking spots were, they're set, the biggest concern that came about, and it's cataloged here, was that they might be too close to the entrance. Where once were two parallel parking spaces, are now going to be two perpendicular spaces, set further back into the site than the original perpendicular spaces were. I'm trying to see, originally, the, the parking spaces were 23 feet from the entrance, now they're going to be 40 feet from the entrance. So, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, safety and the amount of time, the charging, you guys all remember. The outdoor seating, they're looking for four tables and not to exceed 16 seats, one of them which will be ADA compliant. It's going to be on a raised, on a raised area that will have a retaining wall around it to protect the people who are sitting there. And then parking, there was a lot of conversation about parking and how adding the additional seating would impact long-term parking, because now people are going to be stopping, they're going to be having a cup of coffee, stretching their legs, if they've been on the highway for a while. And the applicant agreed to and did comply with the board's request to get a shared parking agreement with the property next door for nine spaces. And then, another assessment was done by Chuck, and they now meet the requirements for the amount of onsite parking associated with what that additional use would be. Wasn't a whole lot of conversation about how to dress up the dumpster. They want to do chain link with slats as opposed to masonry. So, there wasn't a lot of conversation about that. You did talk about, you did receive comments from a number of departments that had no comments. You did have one specific concern from the town administrator, which is F8, concerned asset traffic flow at that intersection. Hopefully, study of the issue will make workable recommendations. At the time, they did submit a, a fully revised plan set in anticipation of tonight. I did explain that they're going to have to put the conditions of approval on it, and Chuck has reviewed the material as he's gone along, and nothing is, nothing is outstanding at this point. The specific findings get into each one of the modifications, where you'll have to vote on each one. And there are three of them. And then, the conditions of approval, these are pretty straightforward, because it's a modification. You'll see the same sort of format in the next one. Under condition one, you have all three modifications. Now, if you choose not to approve one of the modifications, this list will change. So, all three are there for now, but again, your vote will determine what remains. And they are going to have to submit another set with all the conditions of approval, the original, as well as this modification. And then, it does say, "All other conditions of approval remain in full force and effect." So, you don't have to go through the process of going through each one of the criteria for granting, because the umbrella permit is already covering that. So, that's the layout of the decision.
I see three F10s.
You what?
I have three F10s over there, right?
I'm sorry, specific findings is, three F10s. Are you guys shocked by that?
No. Just want to write it down.
It is my downfall.
The additional parking was going to be for the employees, Ian, is that the reason for the extra lot?
Yes. The employees are not going to be required to park on the adjacent lot, and that agreement has been filed at the Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
With the plan showing where the spaces are, all that good stuff.
Okay.
So, I would recommend that you would, oh, yes. Recommend that you go through to the very first F10, and take a vote on the findings, so there are any edits?
Make a motion to approve finding F1 through F10.
I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
So, findings F11 through 13 follow the same format, where it's a "does or does not significantly deviate from the intent and purpose of the originally approved site plan on June 27, 2022." Now, that language can be altered, you can add an additional finding. Very first one is for the outdoor seating. But you should vote on each of them individually.
Okay.
In F11, I'll find that the addition of outdoor seating does not significantly deviate from the intent or purpose of the original plan, because it's just a repurposing of already previous space.
Yeah.
I believe when they had submitted their application originally, it included a restaurant or a drive-through.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else want to take a stab at the second one, or just want to let me go?
I'll make a motion to approve that the charging station does not significantly deviate from the...
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'll go with changing materials for the dumpster enclosure does not significantly deviate from the intent and purpose of the originally approved site plan on June 27, 2022.
I'll second.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
So, in the conditions, all three of those approved modifications will now be incorporated into condition number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification of the site plan, what the conditions has presented.
I'll second.
Any comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to authorize Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on our behalf.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
No, I know, he keeps...
Okay, moving on to the action items. I, draft decision, draft decision, modification of special permit and site plan, reduce the growth of facility function and convert space for research and development, 30 Webster Road, Kirah Lee, applicant.
Similar, it's a modification. The folks who are eligible to vote, the folks who are here tonight, this is a modification of a special permit, so... Did I print the wrong one for myself? I think I did. No, I did not, here we go. So, the folks who are eligible to vote tonight, Christopher is not here, so obviously, he won't be. You'll need four out of four to modify the special permit.
Okay.
So, again, same format, all the documentation that was submitted. They're looking, in a nutshell, they're looking to convert four grow and cultivation rooms into marijuana research rooms. They're asking for a waiver from the site plan specifically for demonstrating the parking, and we'll get into that in a second. The attorney that represented the owner was here and discussed what's going on. They've got a new license, they want to, they want to do the, the research. Research is a allowed use in the, according to our bylaw, but it still requires it to be codified in a special permit. So, they're changing out four of the flower room rooms into medical research facilities, which includes equipment for genetic testing to improve the strains. He had a very long, I won't say very long, but he had a fairly detailed description, so I just put in that finding for, for a full description of research permits granted to Kirah Lee, see exhibit one. So, if anybody wants to see the detail on that, that's available to them in exhibit one. You discussed the waiver request. He demonstrated through his math in both writing on the application and at the meeting that they have ample parking. After discussion with Mr. Atomopoulos, there was no concerns raised by the board as to whether or not that needed further exploration. And that's what the waiver is about, it's really about the parking. They're adding six new employees, and they're going to be in staggered, they're going to be in staggered shifts along with the existing employees that are onsite, and he was able to demonstrate that they have the adequate parking for everyone. Talked a little bit about the odor, and the fact that the grow rooms were being reduced would likely lead to a reduction in the odor that's coming off-site. Again, that will be, remains to be seen, if the board feels that you want them back in front of you this fall, when we'll have a whole summer of potential smell, which seems to be worse in the summer, they're still being held accountable for the, for the odor, so. Their theory is that this will reduce some of that. You did get comments, with no comments for a number of departments, and then there was a back and forth between the applicant and the water and sewer department. And the water and sewer department had asked specifically about wet components and what that would involve in terms of discharge on-site, and the applicant was able to satisfactorily answer that question for the sewer and sewer and water superintendent. So, that's cataloged in here, too. Board of Health wants to make sure that they know that they have to modify their marijuana operating permit to reflect the change. That becomes a condition later in the, you know, in the, in the decision. No public input, written or verbal, is received, you know, after that. Finding F9 is not applicable, so that can be deleted. So, now you're going to be only going through finding, F9 is the number 10, now becomes none. So, your waiver request is here. I've left, you know, I've left a blank space for you to add a finding if you, if you want, but the finding, I think it's F5, I'll have to check, is the one that talks about the parking. And then, the specific findings and decision, again, same thing you just did. Does or does not significantly deviate from the intent and purpose of the originally approved special permit and site plan. So, there's room there to have language if you want to. Conditions of approval, what's being approved is specifically what's in this decision. Future changes, again, always need to come to the planning board. They do, they are required to update their marijuana operating permit. And then, number four is that the work authorized by this approval shall be solely for the purposes noted within this decision. Modification shall not take effect until the decision has been reported at the Registry of Deeds, and, and by agreeing to do that, they agree to the terms and conditions.
Yeah, before we get started, thinking about, you know, this, I think this application's a little bit different than what we've...
a little bit different than what we've seen in the past where we're dealing with uses. Looking at the marijuana regulations over the past two days, I don't doubt that what Mr. Adamopolis said is not true, where they're looking at basically doing packaging and environmental aging studies on their packaging. And then the second would be onsite testing of flavor infusion products. However, I think we need to tailor the decision to, you know, to be more constrained. You know, there's a number, I think the regulations for marijuana is something about 150 pages. And 20 pages relate to research and development. And it's fairly broad. So I think without specific conditions to lay out what he, you know, the attorney asked for, you know, I'm in favor of those conditions, but I can't support animal testing, which is allowed under, as research and development in Massachusetts. I guess ethically, I couldn't do that.
Yeah.
And, you know, thinking from a corporate standpoint, you know, if we say, okay, research and development was not, you know, that gets interpreted to be broad, I'd be fearful that that could be extended in, in time, because, you know, there's only a couple of licenses if they're, you know, if they're allowed to expand upon that. And then also as the regulations change. So, you know, reviewing this decision tonight, I think, you know, and I drafted some conditions that I think need to be added to the use. I'm not prepared to vote on approving it without more limiting language.
Yeah.
Specifically limiting them to environmental packaging testing and also flavor infusions, and also specifically excluding, you know, animal testing, so that there couldn't possibly be some sort of end around.
I thought you said that when he was here, that there was no animal testing.
That, that's their intent, but, so we have verbal testimony. You know, if we, you know, approve this decision, then we come back with, I think of 300 Thompson Road. Well, there was a site plan approved many years ago. What was approved? I just think it needs to be better defined. I'm not saying no, but I think it's got to be better defined to the applicant and better so that if there is a question that comes up, and we've had, you know, issues, you know, we all know the issues we've had, you know, the last number of years. But I think it has to be better defined in black and white before we make a decision. I know a month is, is a slight, you know, slight setback, but I think it'll be wise to delay the vote for a month so that we can, or at least let me present conditions that'll limit them to what was argued for. I don't want to throw, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench
Yeah.
into this, but I, I really think it behooves us to think about, you know, potential implications on my own. And what could be, you know, you know, an adverse effect if Curaleaf says, hey, we want to do other types of testing at their beyond this. So it makes them come back to us if they want to expand beyond packaging and flavor infusion, which is what was presented.
You have 90 days from the time you close the public hearing to make a decision, which gets you to May 24. Your next meeting is actually May 19. You know, one, May is our weird month with town meeting and other things that are going on. So you're well within your rights and your authority and the timeframe to reschedule till the 19.
Right now, it says genetic testing to improve the strains. That's all, but is that a wide range of things to do?
That I don't know. And you can't ask the applicant anymore because the hearing's closed. But, you know, I'm.
Yeah, I think the point in summary, that, you know, really, what I want to do is I want to hold the applicant to what he asked for and just approve those things. Just approve those things.
Everything else has to come back.
Exactly. That's the whole purpose. I'm not against, you know, flavor infusion testing or flavor testing on humans.
Packaging testing.
And packaging testing, those two things. I'm, you know, that's fine. I have no issue with that. But I don't want to say research and development can be expanded in five years, you know, as the regulations change. You know, as, if the federal government ever deregulates that, I would, you know, I think you're seeing an area of the law that's evolving.
Yeah.
Can we just stipulate that in the conditions itself at this point in time? Can we do that?
I think, I think.
Like, exclude animal testing and just be inclined to adjust the flavor in packaging at this point in time? And at least get this passed, and then they have to come back for more.
Putting on my attorney, I mean, so for example, I, one of the conditions I came up with is, you know, consumption of products of item, products or items by human test subjects on-site is limited to flavor infusion. Then I defined that, you know, that it can't include THC.
That was what he was saying.
That's what he's saying, but it's not, it's not in the decision, I think.
Written out.
Written out. You know, it's, it's 19 days.
Yeah.
I think if we hastily go forward, I don't think it's going to be something that's going to cause them a substantial burden.
It won't be at the next meeting either.
Yeah, I don't think the parking is a problem, though.
No, the parking, I have no issue with the parking. I, I'm just very concerned about the use. You know, we have an odor issue. We haven't been able to get our hands around, because the technology doesn't exist on it for them to be able to reduce it. And I really want to slow walk this forward, not just say, you know, try to ad lib something for packaging and environmental testing. You know, slow walk this and approve it next, next meeting. You know, and specifically lay out, you know, I think you have to, you know, first thing being, you know, drafting contracts, you know, defining where the animal is, you know, that's also, and there's, because they don't define that in the regulations. So although they allow it, they don't say what and what can't be. So it's just an extra level of things, I think, to protect the town.
Yeah.
So we don't end up back here three years, four years, five years.
Yeah.
So just as a word of caution, Kathy just said she was not going to be available.
Yeah.
So you're going to need, and you're going to have to make a decision before the 24th, not the 19th. So if it turns out you need a couple of days to get quorum, if Christopher comes, he's available to vote. So you'd still have four. But everyone else has to be here for that meeting. So unless there's unforeseen circumstances, and then we, we figure something out, we contact the applicant, they give us an extension for another week or something. If Kathy is, you know, unavailable via phone, we can certainly phone you in for that decision if, if that works for you. But if Christopher's present, and Jason and Mike and Dan, then you'll be able to go forward.
So can we put constraints on this or limitations in our vote tonight? Or we just?
No, if you were to take a vote tonight, that would be it. If, if you don't do something by the 24th, it's what they call constructively approved. They get to do what they want regardless of what you say.
Yeah.
And like I said, my vote tonight would be a no because for that reason, because there's not, the conditions aren't here yet.
So the problem, the problem is, though, Jason, you know, how are we going to decide upon it before the deadline without them getting cut long?
So are you going to continue it?
Well, would it be the 19th?
Okay.
We could, but Kathy's, Kathy said she can't, is not going to be here.
But Christopher would, as far as I know, would be here. So you'd still have enough voting members to take action.
I think we can also have, well, Kathy could call in for the vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, she could, but this is a big old what-if, you know? I say put it on for the 19th, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't know what she's doing that night.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, well.
But Mike, I'm more curious as to how we're going to come up with the verbiage. And do you have, is it something?
I've had, I've had some of it written. I didn't see the decision before I came here today.
But if we, can we put that wording in at this point in time?
I, I could read for consumption of, you know, I, I think there has to be something that states the uses. I haven't come up with that verbiage yet.
I think in this particular case, it's important to be really thoughtful. I, I would be conservative recommending to you that you schedule it for the 19th. And if something goes haywire, we'll, we'll deal with haywire. There's a little wiggle room on, you know, maybe having a, another scheduled meeting before the 24th, having people phone in. We can, we can make something work so a decision gets made. But the only thing I would recommend for Jason is to get the language to you all as soon as possible so that, you know, people can chew on it.
Yeah, absolutely. And something that's got to be thought out.
So do we need a motion on this? Do we have to continue it?
No, we'll just.
Could, could you also reach out to Mr. Adamopolis and see what his, if he's able to continue our ability to make a decision past 90 days to sign an extension?
Yeah.
Would that be appropriate?
That would be appropriate. And I think it's typically, so your next meeting would be at the end of June. I'll talk to him about it and see if he's open to the idea.
Yeah.
And I'll explain to him, we didn't have votes tonight. So we're hoping for the 19th. And if things start to go a little funky, we can just, you know, he can sign and file an extension with the town clerk.
Okay.
We'll just take it as it comes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. All right, on the public hearings, number three.
Yes. The applicant has requested a continuance. They have a number of engineering items to address. So because they've requested the continuance, you can vote to grant that continuance to May 19th, or you can open up the public meeting and then grant the continuance, however you want to proceed.
Someone want to make a motion to continue this to May 19?
I'll make a motion to continue to May 19th.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, Webster Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, April 28, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room, Second Floor of Webster Town Hall, 350 Main Street, Webster, Mass. The Planning Board will review changes to the zoning map and the zoning bylaw proposed by two separate citizens petitions as follows. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Webster zoning map referenced in Section 650-13 of the Code of the Town of Webster to rezone two parcels of land from the current zoning designation of industrial I to Business District 4, B4, and to be designated within the redevelopment overlay district, ROD. Said parcels being located at and known as 12 Pearl Street, shown on the town assessor's map as parcel ID 15-A-5-0, containing approximately 2.18 acres, and 35 Pearl Street, shown on the town assessor's map as parcel ID 15-A-1-0, containing approximately 5.10 acres. Both parcels own now or formerly by 21 Pearl LLC or take any action thereon. Second one, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Webster zoning bylaw referenced in Section 650-25 of the Code of Town of Webster entitled District 11, redevelopment overlay district by I. Revised Part G, uses allowed by special permit. One G to read as follows. G, mixed-use building containing multifamily units, provided that some of the portion of the building shall contain retail, personal services, or professional business office uses. And I, I revising Part K, off-street parking, by inserting a new subpart 4 to read for, for multifamily housing and for mixed-use buildings as allowed by special permit in the ROD. The Planning Board may modify the applicable off-street parking and landscaping regulations of Section 650-39.
Okay, I'm having a little technical difficulty. The website is trying to make me sign in. I don't want to sign in. I just want to look at the website. Brendan, do you have any thoughts on that? Brendan? I'm just, I just want to access the website. Are we? I'm connected to the wifi. It's asking me to sign in. And that's only to modify webpages and stuff. So I decided to go back to just the Town of Webster. I'm not asking to sign in. Okay, meeting materials. This is the item down here.
Yeah, I'm on the guest, they just signed me into the guest account.
Yeah, that's weird.
We just.
Yeah, we're at the town meeting.
Sorry, everyone. I can back to it this way.
First, have a special one first, 6:30, then the regular.
Yeah, we've done a lot of.
Is the auditorium open? Is the auditorium back open? Last time we were in the back. I had the caf, the gym on a couple times.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone. Technical difficulties. Okay, so these are two warrant articles. The, the petition are, or we have people here to speak to this, but I'll just give you a quick overview. This material is on the website. This is 35 and 21 Pearl Street. And you're all familiar, I think, with that area. It's all zoned industrial. They're proposing to change the underlying zoning to Business 4 for these two parcels. Here's multiple family, here's Business 4, so that it would look like this. And to put the overlay district on it. The problem is, is that rezoning the base zoning, not, not adding the overlay. Adding the overlay district is in and of itself its own thing. But to rezone the underlying zoning to a disconnected zoning district is typically seen by the Attorney General's Office as spot zoning. If this was physically touching the existing Business 4 district down here, then that would be an expansion of the underlying zoning into this area. So that's something for you to think about. We've got someone who can speak to what their game plan is for that on Town Meeting Floor. But as far as tonight goes, you will have to take public input, then vote to either recommend or not recommend to Town Meeting for this article and for the next one. And then I type up the report. I give it to the moderator, and it goes to Town Meeting Floor. You are required by law to make a report to Town Meeting. And if you don't, then Town Meeting can't act on it. So what the, what the intent of changing the zoning for this particular area is to allow for mixtures, to allow for residential and some commercial and/or retail flexibility. We have one building currently in the redevelopment overlay district, and that's the Siskowski School, Siskowski School. And that redevelopment overlay was specifically designed to accommodate that particular development. The overlay district can be, think of it as a floating zone. It can be placed. Overlay districts don't have to be physically connected to the base zoning. So the redevelopment overlay district makes sense for this. Unfortunately. Unfortunately, the warrant article was written in such a way that it does create spot zoning by changing it to B4. And you can only take action on the language that's presented in the citizen's petition. The second part of the hearing deals specifically with changing the language that you read in the, just read in the public hearing notice. This revised Part G, this is actually changing the language in the bylaw. Provides some flexibility in the redevelopment overlay district to allow for a broader multi-use, mixed-use opportunity in the redevelopment overlay district. The second item here says that the board would have discretion on to modify the applicable off-street parking and landscaping regulations. You're already granted that right through the waiver process. So that's, as far as staff is concerned, an unnecessary pit of redundancy. And we don't like to bog down the bylaw with redundancy if we don't have to. So these two are tied together. I do know there are people who want to speak to it here in the audience. So that's staff report.
Sure. Want to come up, please?
Turn on the mic, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. Stephen McDouse of the law firm of Myrick, O'Connell, Webster, here on behalf of the petitioners. That was a fine presentation of what I drafted in a rush to meet the schedule. So which one do you want to start with first, Mr. Chairman? The amendment to the map or the bylaw provision?
Why don't we start with the amendment?
Okay, so the only reason I included in the petition to revise the property, the zoning designation from industrial to business was because, well, the owner wants to have the benefit, the flexibility of the redevelopment overlay district. And when I read the zoning bylaw for the redevelopment overlay district, the first criteria was that the property was in the business zone. So hence, I thought, well, we have to first rezone it or include rezoning it to be business zone from industrial. I don't know if the planner agrees that that's a requirement. But if it's not, happy to take out the rezoning to business. But it was in Section 650-25, the redevelopment overlay district, Part C, qualifications for placement in the ROD. The following qualifications shall apply to any property placed within the ROD. Number one, the property shall be located in District 4, Business. So I'm happy to either, if it's available to us, revise the petition, just add or industrial as a qualification for being in the ROD. Otherwise, we'd have to make the argument that it is not, in fact, spot zoning. Under recent case law, I think the SJC has greatly chipped away at the concept of spot zoning. If it's within the parameters of the police powers or the zoning powers of a town to find that it's in the public interest to make the redevelopment overlay district available to a parcel that's occupied by old dilapidated buildings that don't seem to have an appropriate or an available reuse, that that's an economic tool. And if town meeting were to approve it, I think based on the case law, it'd be a high burden for someone to challenge it and have success. That's just my opinion. But happy to avoid the issue if it doesn't have to be rezoned to business.
Counsel, the backup. Why do these two lots need to be rezoned?
For the greater flexibility under the redevelopment overlay district to...
Okay, but what's, you have a client, so what's their plan? They have a, somebody wants to do something with this property in the future?
Yes.
Okay, that's... I'm just trying to get the story together.
Yeah. I would say too, though, that rezoning, of course, isn't always project-specific, right?
Yeah, it's not, but there's a motivation here to do something.
But this town loves specifics. Hi, my name is Rita Flag. First time I spoke in this room, I was 11 years old because my mom taught me how to change a two-way stop intersection into a four-way stop intersection. And I went out and I got my signatures on a petition, and I brought it in, and I asked for you guys' help, and you were kind enough to help me. So I've been actively wanting to make Webster better since I was about 10 or 11 years old. This particular project is 21 Pearl Street and 35 Pearl Street. If any of you have ever had luck of driving by, as of right now, it looks like a war-torn, bombed area because there used to be a factory that burnt to the ground, and you have leftover basement walls and holes and pipes and area. The goal to this entire project is to take the what building that is still standing and turn it into some beautiful apartments as well as some commercial property in the current building, which is 21 Pearl. The next phase would be building another building to the left side where there is a large piece of land so that we can put additional apartments there. The next phase will be an additional building on the right side of 21 Pearl Street. And the final building will be up on North Main Street. We would be looking at the end of this project at about 164 apartments as well as 5,800 square feet of commercial product area that we're hoping to put things like coffee shops, farmers' markets, local gift shops, items like that, maybe a small gym, things that can better the community. There's a small restaurant interested in the possibilities of being on the first floor of the building that will be on the North Main Street area. So there is a lot of life and beauty and infrastructure. And I have Girl Scouts of America in the Webster-Dublin Oxford area that are interested in wanting to help plant things so they can get a little plaque in the area saying, "Troop 271 planted these blueberries," you know, on the walk that we want to design all the way around it as well for dogs and things. Also, I'm talking to a local agricultural company that wants to help with all the landscaping. And I would like what's called functional landscaping. I would like pear trees. I would like apple trees. I would like blueberry bushes. I would like basil sections. I would like people to be walking their dog. And if they need to pluck something for dinner that they need for their spaghetti sauce, they can do that on the way and then go back home. These are the things I would like to change in that broken-down, worn-torn area.
So you need the redevelopment overlay district to allow that use of multifamily housing? Okay. I thought that's where we were going, but I wanted to hear...
Yeah, but wasn't it a great picture to take, though, on the way to it? So this way, you've got a better idea of what this is as well as what it needs to be. And now you can help me on what I need to do to make sure that that can happen. That's why I come to you.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
What's the area behind it?
Off the river and the train track.
Well, it looks like there's trees or something there off to the left. Right on the left.
This is North Main Street.
Yeah, but to the left.
To the left?
Yeah.
That's a railroad track.
Yep, and then past that.
That's a river. That's a French river.
And then it's just woods there?
There's a lot of woods in it.
Okay.
And this is North Village on this side. And this is Pearl Street. And there was a house right here when I was about 10 that I used to live in, 13 Pearl. And I shouldn't admit this, but I used to find them on the roof and eat my butter and jelly sandwiches.
So what are the woods area?
It's building too long.
What is the woods area? What is that zone?
Um, it's a good question. I think the whole entire thing is industrial. This whole...
The whole, all of it? Okay.
This is all the same zone.
Okay. Now, it's, it's going to the, he's showing us the zoning districts.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The whole yellow is all one.
Okay. I don't know, it was that big.
I didn't know. I was wondering how you were seeing her screen now and you want...
So Ms. Morgan, is this a spot zoning? Is that a finding that this board can make?
Counsel is absolutely right. There's been a lot of significant case studies recently that have been chipping away at the AG's rationale behind spot zoning. You can, in your report, express your concerns. If you want to recommend to town meeting that the underlying zoning be changed to B4, you know, that's totally a prerogative. And the report would include, you know, an explanation as to why the redevelopment of this area is seen as, you know, an important town goal, if that is what you so decide. It'll be up to the Attorney General's Office, then, to decide whether or not it'll go forward. Right now, we just, we just don't know. So if you want a good face at a town meeting, yeah. You know, this has, in the past, been maybe considered something that the state wouldn't allow, but we're...
Yeah, because it's not connected to the other B4 district. It's sitting on an island by itself.
Yeah.
But I understand the rationale, you need to expand the uses that are allowed in that area, otherwise you can't go forward with this complex.
Yeah. And I would be loath to recommend to you that you change the redevelopment overlay district to say anything in industrial can now be changed. You know, I think that the implications of, of having, you know, the language change in the warrant article to say, yeah, and the industrial zone as well as the B4 for the redevelopment overlay district, I think that has broader implications. So I would, in this case, if you feel it's a good idea, and you'll have to vote tonight, to put this forward to town meeting going, we see a lot of potential here. We think it's a good idea. And the state can figure it out.
There are a lot of apartments in that area.
Not yet.
No, there are apartments.
Oh, there are.
All up and down that street, yeah.
Yes.
People, people live all over there.
Yeah, that's apartments and...
Marcus Street.
Yeah, there's two roads, apartments here.
Going the other way.
That's correct.
I don't think anybody would deny the fact that the zoning doesn't really reflect what's happening on the ground.
That's right. There's not much to inject there.
No, but, you know, the shrinkage of your industrial zones in town, which is this orange area, is something to be thoughtful about in the future in terms of, you know, spreading out uses. There's a lot of stuff that's coming forward that's now being protected under, you know, various state laws outside of zoning that could have implications. So that's a bigger, that's a bigger nut to think about. So I would recommend that if you feel that this is something to put before town meeting, and town meeting says, yeah, we send it to the state, it'll be up to them to decide.
I think it's a great use, use for that. There's no industry around there. Who knows if there will ever be industry there in the future? I don't think that there will be.
Yeah.
And to turn it into housing and have some businesses there, that would be very purposeful for that area. I think it's a great idea for use of that land.
I think it sets you up for, and this is certainly, I know this is going to feel weird for Rita to hear me say this, but not all projects come to fruition. So you're making a change on your zoning map that's going to impact that land regardless of who's developing it. But it does provide an opportunity for future owners of the land, whether it's this current group or someone who buys the property from them. This, you know, this changes the dynamic of what can be done with the property. And that's what, you know, zoning is all about. It's not about who's sitting in this room tonight. It's what's this going to look like 20 years from now.
I think there's a better way to incorporate B4 industrial, what are we looking at? Industrial into that zoning district. You know, through an amendment, through a cleaner amendment in our zoning bylaws. That way, all the uses would be automatically allowed. And that would apply to the whole zoning.
There's a lot of small streets there. To put a big industry there, I don't think you can even hold it, right? All those little streets and back streets in that area?
Right.
I don't know if you can even put a business, but you're going to have to have them somewhere.
So this zoning would be more redevelopment. So we would be allowing multifamily housing, assisted living facilities, retirement facilities, retail stores, and not exceeding 5,000 square feet of restaurants, personal service shops, hotels and theaters in that area.
So the street, the divider, since there's a street there, it's not touching the multifamily on the other side?
The other map you have...
So we did the purple. It's touching the purple there, but there's a road in between. So you're saying that if there's a road in between, they're not considered touching?
This is, this is Pearl, this is Pearl, Pearl Street, right here.
Yep.
And these are houses, houses, a lot, a lot, house, house, house. Those are all multifamily, right there. This is North Main Street, also has the businesses that Chippies, and then there's you've got houses, houses. You said Sissels over here. And then this is, of course, abandoned, and then you have just one building. So you have homes right here, but these were before the 70s, and they were built before the zoning, EPA and zoning was here. So they were like, oh, shoot, the past is a mill. So they're wrapped in the industrial even now.
And there's a church over there on that side, right?
Church is further down here.
Further down that.
And then the intersection over down there, Rosen's.
If this area was zoned business, you'd have no problem with this because it would be an expansion of the existing district.
It's the wrong kind of...
Yeah, right now, what's allowed there is agriculture, single-family agricultural. You have wholesale distributing plants, warehouses, building materials, sales, storage, truck terminals.
Industrial.
Office space, yeah. Junkyards and marijuana. So that wouldn't be allowed if we changed the zone. Taking it from more of an industrial use to more residential. And we haven't, now that building at 35 Pearl Street, that one, that burned down?
That was, yeah.
Close to probably, what, 10 years ago at this point?
I feel like it was, yeah. 10 or 11 years ago, it burned down to the ground.
Has anything been built there since?
Nope. If you drive by, you'll see what's left of, would have been some of their basement and their ground floor.
Yeah, the city parks left there, vehicles.
They called me to see if they could put their stuff in there. I was like, sure, go ahead. I'm all for fixing Webster, and you need to put your stuff somewhere, so.
Well, I think, I think the use is, is, you know, it's worth a try, you know, to make it, to have, get a use of the land rather than bake and want. And spot zoning, I think we express a word of caution. It might be rejected by the Attorney General's Office.
Yes, I would expect that the business zone is more restrictive than industrial.
Pardon?
The business zoning district is more restrictive than the existing industrial relative to uses?
Zone six is what we were looking at, right?
No, four.
Four?
I think the industrial zone is more restrictive.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say that the business is probably more compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood of the residential than the industrial zoning district.
You'll notice on the map up here, this is not the first time spot zoning has been in Webster. This is the, I think it's Jeffco, this particular site. So there's an argument to be made that certainly the industrial zones within the urban environments, which would be this area here, and, well, this is, this is a different instrument. That's the, that's the water and sewer department. But, you know, there's something to be said about the fact that the zoning doesn't reflect, you know, modern times. Just as a, if I were a resident here, I would be supportive of that. But that's just the, personally, I think in order to get that site redeveloped, everyone's going to have to be a little bit flexible.
Also, the multifamily would be by special permit, right? If the zoning changes, you still need to get a special permit from this board?
Yeah, because you're allowing everything in zoning districts one and three, and three is multifamily residential in B4, or zoning District 4.
Just the adaptive of the overlay district requires special permits for...
Right. My feeling is to recommend approval, but also issue a word of caution about potential rejection from the Attorney General's Office for spot zoning.
I feel, you feel the same way?
You feel the same way?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Brian, what do you think?
I agree.
Time in.
His first meeting, so he got to put him on the hot seat.
Put him on the spot.
So what are you looking for, man, from us?
Okay, because you opened the public hearing for both items, we need to now...
Oh, the second.
Talk about this. Again, number, number two is not necessary. You've granted rights to waive any of the requirements as part of your, your duty, so that's not necessary. But the first one requires part G, use is allowed by special permit to read as follows. Mixed-use building containing multifamily units, provided that some portion of the building shall contain retail. And that's just requiring a special permit for mixed use. This re- redevelopment overlay district hasn't really been used to its fullest. It was designed specifically for multifamily housing in a business district, so this has never come up. That's how I'm reading it. I would certainly defer to the attorney. I think, you know, my recommendation as your staff person would be, that's, that would be a go. That would give them the necessary flexibility that they would have in the bylaw. If the AG's approves the zoning change, that would give them extra flexibility.
You know, I think it's about time that we get with the times, because you see this all over Worcester. I, I drive in Worcester all day long, and you see these apartment buildings, especially apartment buildings, and businesses underneath. I think it's, would be a big plus for the town of Webster, to have that property developed and, you know, and, you know, nicely, and, and, you know, people could use it, and, and say, this is a real plus for the town of Webster. I, I really think it's a no-brainer.
Generates revenue, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, revenue and, you know, bringing people into town. Bringing people into town. Yeah. Anytime you can better a piece of property, seeing what it's been like for all these years, it's a disgrace. I mean, not that we had any other options, but now that we have an option that we can better that property and be proud of it, I, I think that, you know, we should move forward with it.
Well, if you don't have any comments or any other things that the, the applicants would like to say, your next step would be to close the hearing, and then direct staff to put together a draft report, which I'll send to all of you before the end of the week for your review and comment back to me. I think the more eyes on this report, the better. Then it goes to the moderator and town meeting floor.
Is G and K that revision, that's part of the same warrant article?
Yes.
So you're saying K is a redundancy, not needed, but G would be something that would allow them increased flexibility?
Yes. And through the special permit process.
Right. So if we, we create another redundancy, you know, which isn't, which isn't a good thing in our bylaws, we can't separate it, though. We can't separate those two items.
You could recommend G and not K, or...
But town meeting can't take a vote on one or the other. They can't take it separate, though. It's one warrant article, right?
Yeah, that would require an amended motion on the floor.
Which, that gets messy.
That does get messy.
People get confused.
Want to see chaos at town meetings, do an amendment on the floor.
I think we could make a motion without K, the original motion, if we believe it's redundant. I think you can move, not the full article, but just G.
Not even mention it.
You don't have to move the entire article. You could move...
Okay, well, I'm in support of G, but I will say, I have negative feelings on K for the reasons that...
Well, I'd like to understand, I didn't, how K is redundant. I don't mind not including it in the motion, but I just didn't understand how it was redundant from where, where it is in the overlay.
I don't think you realize the permit now provides parking.
That you could get that relief in the existing language, is what I think I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where is that? Just generally?
Yeah, waivers have always been part of the process.
Waivers from bylaw provisions?
Yeah, new waivers.
Yeah, people can ask for waivers.
Of a bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, when their application comes forward, the submission requirements, they ask for the waivers there.
Good point.
And, and this, this report will be reviewed, I was talking to the town administrator today, the report will be reviewed between the moderator and town council to make sure everything's in order, and we'll certainly, you know, put in the report that, you know, revised motion would be recommended.
We're looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Yep, need a motion and then direct staff to draft a report.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing for the town meeting warrant articles, B and C, as identified in the agenda?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to direct Ms. Morgan to draft a decision on our behalf.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Good luck getting your two-thirds.
Thank you. That was gonna be the next question. Is it a two-thirds? Presume it is.
Yep.
That's the easy part.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
You have just a couple of things left, reorganization, an update, if there's anything from Chuck, and accessory dwelling unit draft bylaw. So what do you want to tackle first?
Okay, we'll do the reorganization first. As you know, I'm gonna be stepping down. We're looking for another chairman.
Guess I'll step in.
Dan is the man to step forward. Do you have to vote on it?
Okay, so you're gonna need three separate votes, a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk.
I'll make a motion to nominate Dan for chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, vice chair?
Was that unanimous, four?
Yes, yes.
I can vote for myself?
Yeah, you can vote for yourself. This is America.
Yeah.
All right, so vice chair.
Do we have someone here that would like to step to, step up to be vice chair?
I have Chris here, so I don't know if he wants to be, but should be wanting you to. Jason?
I won't say no.
One of you's gonna be clerk, and one of you's gonna be vice chair.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that Jason be vice chair.
I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, will we look for a clerk?
I'll make a motion that Kathy's their clerk.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, y'all are getting some new nameplates this weekend. Okay. And Kathy, I'll run down. For you, it's mostly just waiting hearing notices, so. All right.
Thanks, thanks for volunteering.
We could change that. Okay, you're up.
I don't, I don't have any updates that I can think of, and I know Ian Brown told me a few things that are not on the agenda, so.
Chuck. The Ballot High School, they must be working on the inside, and I heard that the inside that they've been working on was gonna be ready after April vacation. Has that taken place?
I don't, I don't know about any of the inside. Because it's really, the, the, the part that I see is really all the external type of features.
Maybe the building inspector?
I do know something. I know a little something about this. They went, the, the state inspector went with our inspector out there, and apparently a field modification in the auditorium was done without permission, so everything is gonna be open and ready except for the auditorium. And they're working on ironing out those details. But everything else, they're moving furniture, and they're on their way.
Okay, so it's not in use right now, as far as you know, the...
I, I don't know. I thought they were gonna be ready for right after April vacation, but I haven't been out there.
Maybe someone, you know, I, I know that, I shouldn't be saying this, because I'm not chairman anymore, but I, I was hoping that maybe someone could come before us, you know, from the school committee, the, the head guy that's coordinating this whole project. You know, I walk behind there quite a bit. You know, obviously, I can see all the work. Must be a ton of work being done on the inside, because I see all the cars. But you look behind the school itself, and it doesn't look like there's any activity at all. You know, you see these, you know, lampposts, and you see all kinds of other piping, and, you know, the parking lot is, still looks like the same. I mean, you know, why can't the inside and the outside being worked on at the same time? Because they shouldn't be interfering with each other. That's just my thought.
I think they've been full steam ahead on the interior to get the kids back into the building.
I'm sure they must be different contractors, Ann, that are kind of doing that. That's just my guess. You know, because they have different fields of expertise. And, you know, it'd be nice if someone could give the town, maybe through the planning board, an update as far as where we stand. The other thing is, is, you know, the construction on Route 16. You know, people see all the tearing down of the cliffs and, you know, from what I understand, it's gonna be a double rotary. Is that correct, from what you're hearing?
I think it's, I think it's only a single rotary now.
And a couple of lights, right?
Single rotary and a stop, a stop signal.
Yes.
And, and the updates that are coming from the state about the construction are being posted to the website.
Okay. Because I understand it's gonna cost like $12 million. I think I remember seeing a figure out there. Would have been just as easy to put traffic lights, but I don't, believe me, I don't have any kind of expertise as far as the construction that's going on, or the alternative of putting traffic lights. Because it seems like the worst thing is getting off the highway and trying to pull onto Route 16, coming from both ways. And you would have thought that traffic lights would have been much cheaper than $12 million worth of construction, but, but anyhow, so it is on the website that you can check this out. Okay.
Does the school committee have any updates on the building?
Uh, there is a, a school building committee.
Did they put updates?
And you know what? I, I'll get in touch with the business manager, Lisa Kontos, and express, you know, what you've said here tonight, and see if they'd be willing to send someone. They don't have to. They're only required to be here when it has to do with the site plan. But, you know, I don't know, maybe she'd be willing to give us an update as to, you know, when that work's gonna begin. All the weather that we've had is probably made some of that site work a little difficult.
Yeah, yeah. But just to get an update, you know, so that if people do watch, you know, the, our planning board meeting, would have the general idea as far as percent complete, are they ahead of schedule, behind schedule? You know, just so that, you know, not only us, but the town, the town folk know that as well.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find out. I'll, I'll put it out there.
Okay. You guys got any other, um, it looks like the, the needle places, I see activity taking place there now. I've seen a couple trucks there, and so it's nice to see that that's finally being used.
All right, so that's something you really can't talk about. It's on staff's to-do list.
Okay, all right.
There, there are some issues there. Actually, I've got, I've got four of them that Chuck and I have talked about that will be included as an itemized update for the next meeting, on the 19th.
Do you guys have any?
Yeah, is there a, has there been any recognition given from the town to Paul for his service to the town? I know we spoke, at least one of us spoke informally about maybe, you know, the town recognizing Paul's service on the planning board. I know he did a lot with the Lake Association.
Yeah, he's...
I think somebody from the board should reach out to the town administrator.
Somebody from the board, or, I, you know, I think it'd be a nice gesture, maybe at the next meeting, if we had a vote, to recommend a board of selectmen, but we could go that route, too, but...
Yeah, but Jason, Jason, you're touching my heart. You're so sweet.
I'll definitely reach out to Rick and, you know...
You'll reach out, yeah.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
I think, I think that's good.
I do, too. I do, too.
You know, I know about the Lake Association, I know about, some about the planning board, but I think, you know, he was here, he's been here. The family's been here forever.
Yeah, yeah.
Article of the paper at least, or something.
Yeah, or, no, you know, they usually, you know, the selectmen usually have a one-page certificate that's read at a meeting, and I think an appropriate thing if, you know, we're at least able to at our next meeting, I don't know who would vote against it, but, you know,
No, no.
You know, have, have a, have a vote to say, you know, we endorse, you know, that the selectmen recommend, you know, recognize publicly Paul of Framboise for his service.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Rick and, you know, get something done on that. Because like I said, he, he was such an asset for the town for the 15 years or whatever, you know, that he was on the, you know, the head guy, you know, coordinating us and helping us through these difficulties, issues, along with, you know, you and Chuck, Ann, you know, so. He was definitely, you know, a guy that should be recognized.
Or you could name all the special permits after him. He'd love that.
We can all get together and go to his house, knock on the door, and take him out to dinner.
That would be nice.
Without breaking the open meeting, you know. The last piece, I'm just gonna quickly tell you. I had a meeting with CMRPC about moving forward with getting some draft language together for the accessory dwelling unit. The first step is to sit down with, excuse me, with the building commissioner and other people in town to go over a handful of their recommendations, do's and don'ts. And once we get something together, we'll be have, bringing it forward to this board to talk about before it becomes an official warrant article. If anyone's interested, and it cannot be more than two of you, would like to be a part of the little working group with CMRPC on the first draft, you can think about it and join us. It won't be, it won't be for another couple of weeks. It'll probably be during the day via Zoom. But there are, there are a couple of things that are specific to Webster that need to be ironed out in the draft language that came from the state. So we're, we're gonna work on that as staff, and then we're gonna put it out to any other subcommittee who wants to be involved. We'll ask the zoning board if they've got anyone on that that would like to do this, too. And then we'll, we'll really go full speed ahead for October.
So that's for B and B type units, the double...
No, this is, we are gonna address...
You're watching your apartment, right?
You know what? The, the state tells you, 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 this is not for short-term rental. This is not A and B. Those are some things that we wanna make sure we have.
There, there's some nuances, like one of them is, it's, applies to any lot. So, for example, you could have an industrial warehouse. And because it's a lot, you can actually put a residential house on it that's less than 900 square feet. So, you know, there, there's some intricacies. I don't think it was well thought out by the state. You know, condominiums, I was in a meeting where somebody brought up condominiums, and the representatives from the state said, oh, we haven't really thought about condominiums. So who gets the one house in the condominium T complex to use as a, you know, there, there's a lot of intricacies that have to be thought, because it may, where it's gonna work back, it's gonna work back like residential.
There's a lot, there's a lot...
And the other thing is that it also applies to your minimum setback. So if you have different setbacks for different sized structures, the minimum setback applies to the accessory dwelling unit. So if you have a setback that says it's five, and another one that says it's 15, well, the five applies to the accessory dwelling, no matter what the shorter setback is for. So there's some stuff like that that's a little funky.
It's a lot to think about, and it's been a long night, but I've already put two questions to CMRPC that they're like, oh, we never even thought about that, that are now going to the state, so. It's, if you're a zoning geek like I am, you'll find the roller coaster ride fascinating, but I won't bore you with that tonight.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Microphones off, please.